Welcome, everyone, to work session this evening. My conversation with Denny is that he's here to answer questions. And we're just going to head off into this discussion. Let's see, the manager, you have anything you wanted to say before we begin?
Ama'am.
So you will see in front of you, you've each got all the motions in front of you. And Claire has stated her support for having her motion come at the end instead of at the beginning. And then, as you go down these AIS recommendations, we'll have to sort of connect those with the appropriate motion that you all have that's related to those recommendations. And see if we can get through all of this. I'm going to start out by, for the purpose of the public and for us, to just read what's here about MPT. The provisions of ORS 307600 to 307637 enable cities to grant local property tax exemptions for multi-unit housing located in core and transit-oriented areas designated by the city. There is a need and demand for better housing at rental rates or sale price accessible to a broad range of the general public in the core and transit-oriented areas, which is not likely to be produced without this incentive. This incentive is intended to -- intended to stay in the same place on my paper here. I'm going to go. Sorry. Okay. A, stimulate the construction of transit-supported, multiple-unit housing in the city's core and transit-oriented areas to improve the balance between the residential and commercial nature of those areas, and to ensure full-time use of the areas as places where citizens of the community have an opportunity to live as well as work. B, encourage the development of vacant or underutilized sites in core and transit-oriented areas rather than sites where sound or rehabitable, multi-unit housing exists. C, encourage the development of multiple-unit housing with or without parking in structures that may include ground-level commercial space. D, encourage the development of multi-unit housing with or without parking on sites with existing, single-story commercial structures. E, encourage the development of multi-unit housing with or without parking on existing surface parking lots. And F, preserve existing publicly assisted housing that is affordable to low-income persons by providing the incentives authorized to existing, multiple-unit housing that is subject to low-income housing assistance contract with an agency or subdivision of this state or the United States. Really about either helping with affordable housing or helping us to have the kind of housing of the sort we want where we want it. I ask Glenn, I just want to clarify that for everybody because I think people have different ideas about what this really is. And then I asked Glenn to talk to -- to answer two questions. Go ahead.
So, the first question is, relates to the ability of the council to include in the MPT ordinance, a provision that actually requires contractors to hire locally. As you may recall, what the proposed ordinance currently does is, it requires all MPT applicants to provide the city with a plan for local hiring. And then, second, if the applicant isn't able to qualify for a 10-year exemption in order to get additional years for that exemption, the developer can say, "And I'm going to fully implement that plan." The question is, can the city council do more than that in terms of actually requiring all MPT applicants to hire locally? This is a conversation that the council has had on and off, I think, since you started a couple of years ago with this. And I think at one point Jerry actually addressed this. The short version is, the federal constitution prohibits states, and that includes political subdivisions, so cities, from passing laws that favor their own residents over others. So what's included in the ordinance, part one, is, we can require somebody to create that plan to make sure they're looking at how they would be able to hire locally. But what we cannot do is actually require, as a condition of getting this benefit, the hire locally. The -- was there?
I just want to clarify a question, if I could.
Wait until he finishes it.
Yeah. The second question related to the city's ability to actually make sure that, in the future, if a developer gets a MPT, make sure that the developer is fully complying with all federal, state, local laws, all the terms of the MPT approval. And what's in the proposed ordinance, I think it's the, maybe it's the very last section of the proposed ordinance, is a new provision that would allow the city to impose administrative civil penalties for violations of the state MPT provisions, the city's MPT provisions, the administrative rules, the resolution, virtually any violation. So if a developer is not complying with certain types of, well, actually, any type of, whether it's a federal, state, or local law, this provision would allow the city manager to issue a civil penalty. And it goes on to state to make sure that we're able to collect that. In the event that the developer does not pay that civil penalty, then the council can terminate the exemption merely for the non-payment of that civil penalty. And like the rest of the provisions that we have on civil penalties, each day violation would constitute a separate civil penalty. So if somebody is continuing to not comply, we would have that tool to make sure that they do comply.
Thank you for that. And so now, I'm just asking, not for comments related to this, but if you want any more clarification from Glenn on these items that he's tried to clarify. And I've got Mike and Greg in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Glenn. Where's the differentiation between the way this is written and the 50% local business target as opposed to the legal standard, the federal legal standard? Where it's -- help me understand the definitions and the difference there.
Which 50%?
In the ordinance, there's the -- Denny, perhaps? You're the better person to ask here.
Yeah. We've set a goal for 50% local contracting. And so it's a goal, and they need to prepare a plan that demonstrates how they're going to meet that goal.
So we can ask for a plan, and we can say, "We recognize this is your intent," but we can't put any teeth in it? Is that the legal difference? We can't say you can or can't have it based on whether or not you meet the plan?
Correct. We can't say, "You only get the MPT if, in fact, you hire locally the 50%."
So all we're really asking them to is to plan to?
We're asking them to examine how they would be able to get to 50% and submit that plan to the city, so we know they've at least looked at it. But with respect to the, what I call, sort of, the initial MPT period, that's all we can ask for.
And, and I noticed that it also mentions the inclusion of certified payroll. Did I have that right in what I read?
I think, as Glenn mentioned, as a criteria for meeting the additional public benefit criteria, one of the things they could agree on is for them to demonstrate how they've met that plan goal. And that would be through certified payroll and actually showing exactly how they met the economic impact goal.
Are we on sound legal ground to require, as a condition, certified payroll?
I believe the answer is yes. I'd want to think a little bit more, but I would not have a worry that that's going to violate the federal constitution by requiring certified payroll. Because that's not requiring the hiring of people, it's just saying, "You need to prove to us how many residents, local residents, you did hire." So I think that would be okay.
I think it's nice that we're asking them if they would, or telling them that's a way they could show us their local hire. I think we should -- I will have another motion besides the ones that are written that will delineate that, because I think that's an important part of it.
Just keep in mind that as part of the reporting at the end of year one, so they submit their financial statements after the first year, they would also be required to submit some hiring data as well. That's a requirement, that they submit that. So at least we can truth, who's getting hired, and how are we meeting that goal?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Greg?
I'm not sure if this is a Glenn or a Denny question, but would it be a better approach for us, instead of looking at the legal mandate limit, looking at further incentivizing the program for local hire? In other words, making it more attractive? Would that be, you know, outside of legal bounds? Or would that be within, in the context of us being able to create additional incentives for developers to, you know, do local hire, go for local hire goals instead of, you know, mandates?
In a sense, at least part of that is already built into the proposed ordinance. If a developer is going to get a rate of return in excess of that 10%, then instead of getting a 10-year MPT, the developer may only get a nine-year, eight-year, seven-year. What's built into the ordinance is that if that's the case, and the developer actually wants to gain the full 10-year exemption, then the developer can say, "Okay, I'm actually going to meet that 50% goal." And in the event that the developer doesn't meet that, then the developer wouldn't get those additional years of the MPT. So there's at least part of what you're talking about already built in.
Okay. But if we wanted to go further than that in terms of that incentive, there wouldn't be any, you know, legal prohibitions on us adding further incentive to that? More carrot than stick?
I would need to know the nature of the carrot in order to answer that question.
Got you. Okay.
Alan?
Two questions. One related to Mike's question, which I had the same question. At the end, on page 17 in 4D, at the end, it says, "In addition, the first year's reporting shall include the home city or ZIP code of the construction labor workers." That basically, how's that different than certified payroll? It's asking for those?
It is. It is different, because this is just a residency information. Certified payroll is a kind of a legally binding document that you have to indicate how many hours you worked, what were your wages, and actually certify that by signature. So it is kind of a legally binding kind of certification that you met all of those requirements. So it's a little different.
Okay. And we chose not to put certified payroll on this section right here as a requirement for, for reporting because?
At this point, yes, because it's, again, it's a legally binding tool to basically show that you're meeting prevailing wage rate laws. So we didn't see that that be, that's necessarily the applicable document for this purpose, because we're not, this isn't a prevailing wage discussion, really. It's a kind of a local hiring discussion.
Do they have to meet prevailing wage within this context?
Not for tax exemption programs, no.
If it were a RFP from us, they would. Second question's for Glenn. So where it says that they have to provide a plan that 50% or more, more than 50% of the dollar volume of the combined professional services and construction contracts are to local firms, can we find that it's not in the public interest and therefore deny an application because the plan didn't do more, certify that they would get more than 50% in local firms?
Is your question that they didn't provide a plan, or is your question that they didn't commit to implementing the plan?
That the plan didn't, well, either that they didn't, didn't provide enough data that showed how they would implement the plan, or the plan doesn't come up with 50%.
We can require that they develop a plan to show how they could hire at least 50%. What we cannot do is require that they implement that plan. So if they provide us with a plan that says, you know, "We've looked at it. Here's our plan to hire 10%," then they will have failed to meet one of our approval criteria, and the council could deny the MPT. On the other hand, if they provide a plan that says, "Here's how we can meet that 50% criterion," and it's a, you know, reasonable plan, but they say, and I don't know why they would, but maybe they'd say, "But, you know, we're not going to do that. But here is our plan," then you could not deny, because they failed to meet that criterion, the criterion is provide a plan, and they would have provided a plan.
So what if we determine the plan's not reasonable?
It depends on what you're really looking at when you say it's not reasonable. And when I used that term, what I meant is, you know, they had a plan that was all of three sentences long, and they just made some conclusory statements, and they didn't really say, "Okay, so how are they going to do it?" You could, in that case, say, "You didn't meet the requirement to provide a plan. You provided two or three conclusory sentences." If they provided a plan that said, "Here's how we would do it," and, you know, somebody could look at that and say, "Okay, yeah, I understand how you would do that." It would, and the reason why you're actually denying is because there's no assurance they're going to implement the plan? That's where it would be a problem.
So our, it's just one sentence, is, "The applicant must provide a plan that provides for more than 50% of the dollar volume of the combined professional services and construction contracts to include local firms." Anything could meet that criteria, including a three-sentence plan.
Unless?
Is there a way to strengthen this so that we can have there be a reasonable standard and that they have an implementation plan as well?
This is what would go into the code. We are anticipating that there will be administrative rules to implement this. You know, in the old version, we talked about standards and guidelines. Now we're just talking about administrative rules. So in the administrative rules, I would anticipate that there would be requirements as to what this plan looks like. So yes, there would be more detail.
And so back to the original one, if the administrative rules, the original question, if the administrative rules then said, "Here's how you do this plan, and it has to be reasonable, and it has to have an implementation plan," and then we look at that and say, "This doesn't cut mustard," can we deny it based on that criteria? Trying to see if there's any teeth to this.
If, if your goal is to find a way to deny because it doesn't appear they're going to hire 50% or more, then the answer is no. You can't get there without violating the federal constitution. If it's, can we ensure that they have seriously thought about and hopefully saw the benefits of hiring 50% or more? Yes, we can include detail in, and I recommend the administrative rule, for what that plan looks like, to make sure that they have actually seen, "Oh, we really could hire 50% and maybe that's even going to save us money." So we can include those kinds of requirements, but we can't do it to the point where we're saying, "We don't think you're going to implement the plan, and so we're going to deny for that reason."
Okay. What if they had a plan that said they're only going to make 25%? Can you deny it for that?
If their plan said, "We're going to hire a 25%," absolutely, because the requirement was submit a plan that shows 50% or more.
Okay.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to go back to the certified payroll. That would basically make, ensure that following the wage laws, paying overtime, making all the appropriate withdrawals for fed and state, that would be examined in a certified payroll?
You know, because it's a legal specialty document, I'm not a specialist in certified payroll, so I am hesitant to ask, answer that legal question. It's used to monitor prevailing wages on prevailing wage projects that I know. It's used beyond that scope, I'm not really that familiar with at this point.
Okay. Well, and then who certifies, who would certify the payroll? An independent?
The general contractor would basically sign that says they've, you know, issued, you know, checks of the appropriate wage scale and met the prevailing wage requirement, which there's a published scale that you have to meet of wage levels, and they certify that they've met all those criteria.
Okay. Well, I think we need to know a little bit more specifically what that means about, you know, the checklist that they use. And we don't need to know that right now, but it'd be good to know everything that's, like, what exactly is being certified. That's all for now.
Mike, and then we're going to go start.
Okay. Good. The certified payroll is, in fact, though, an additional, is it correct that it is, an additional set of disincentives, I guess, to the developer, to the, to the construction company? Because to lie on certified payroll is a different classification of crime. Isn't that correct? It's an issue of perjury if you certify and have it notarized. Isn't that correct? Which is why the standard exists.
I have never seen what the certification is. And so if you perjure yourself, yes, that's a crime. If you are certifying something for state law purposes or federal law purposes, and you're doing it to comply with some federal or state requirement, then the state or federal governments, at least in the certifications that I have seen that city officials sign, yes, there are $25,000 penalties and five years in prison attached to some of those. I don't know what this one's attached to.
Isn't it true that certified payroll is, in fact, used on prevailing wage jobs to ensure that the data that's submitted is absolutely accurate and that the, to the security of the government body that's regulating it, and with penalties on the backside if they're not truthful? Isn't that what it is for?
I assume so, yes.
Okay. So it's a device by which you get accurate data with great fear if you mess it up? It's also true that it includes specific information about the ZIP code, for example, of the particular people who are being paid. Isn't that correct?
I believe so, yes, that there's a--
Is it also correct that it's done monthly?
I think it's actually done weekly, but--
So that when a public entity, like, say, a city asks for a document like that to be provided, you have a weekly report that says how many local people were hired for that project on a weekly basis that could be a public document, right?
As far as I know, prevailing wage, yes.
Thank you, sir. That's what I was looking for.
Okay. So, on your sheet, AIS recommendation number one is amend the proposed ordinance to provide that the two standing neighborhood representations on the panel would be selected by the neighborhood associations, and the two representatives from the MPT-impacted neighborhood would be selected by the impacted neighborhood associations. Both Alan and Mike had motions that are, refer to this particular concept. Mike?
Well, I, I wanted to make that motion, but I don't know that, I didn't get a chance to read the specifics of Alan's there. I don't want to, it's the same thing.
Yes, it was by the mayor.
Okay. I would move, then, if it's an appropriate time for us to make those motions, or are we just going to have a discussion around?
It's fine for you to make the motion. We can keep on discussing till people are ready.
I would, then, let me grab the language that I submitted on that.
Right on the list. It's on your list.
It's on the last page.
I'm sorry. Yours is right here. Thank you very much.
It's the last one.
Move to amend the ordinance to provide that the two representatives of the MPT review panel will be selected by the MPT-impacted neighborhood association. With a second, I'll explain.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
I think, from the discussions I've heard and the talk around how this will go, there may be, or there may not be, some kind of difference of neighborhood involvement from what we've originally discussed. But I want to make sure that the livability concerns of the affected neighborhood association are addressed forthrightly, directly to council for any particular MPT application. And this gives that opportunity for the neighborhood association to have who they think is best suited to analyze the application.
And just to point out that that motion's exactly what's in the recommendation from staff. Yes.
So my motion was slightly different. I don't know of any panels that we have where outside agencies actually select the person. It's usually either selected by the mayor, or selected by council, or selected by the city manager, as opposed to some outside entity. So my proposal wasn't that different. I agree that we still need to have that kind of input, but for the review panel, for those two positions that are from the neighborhood, my, Councilor Zelenka's motion number two says that the impacted neighborhood would, would recommend to the mayor, the mayor would nominate, and then the city manager would select, which is our common practice, and I believe in how we do the development of advisory panels. So I would move to substitute Counselor Zelenka's motion two, and, in its entirety, which would handle this issue as well.
Do you want to talk about, you're replacing it with the total of motion two?
Yeah.
We want to go into that in more detail?
Yes.
I'll second.
Maybe by, by reading it. So motion two says, "Amend the ordinance to provide that the two at-large neighborhood representatives on the review panel be nominated by the mayor based on recommendation received from the neighborhood association boards." There's two, two that are generally on the review panel, and two that are from that specific neighborhood for that specific project. In this case, the two general ones would be from recommendations from the neighborhood associations, and then they would be nominated by the mayor, and then selected by the city manager. And then the second part, "And the two additional neighborhood representatives that the panel is reviewing a MPT application be nominated by the mayor based on recommendation received from the board of the neighborhood association where the MPT project would be constructed, similar." And all members would be appointed by the city manager. This is a city manager advisory committee, so that's our traditional way of doing business. In addition, the other duties of the review panel, the panel also will be charged with reviewing and advising the city manager on individual project compliance with applicable requirements prior to approval, which is what was in the original staff one, midway through construction, which I think we learned from Capstone is a good idea, and then upon completion of construction, which I believe we learned from Capstone is a good idea as well. And then the city manager will annually provide the information from the review panel about compliance during and after construction to the council as appropriate during the project, and as part of the annual review of the MPT program. So basically, what this does is a variation on what was a, what's in the ordinance right now. It's just that it has the neighborhood associations and the mayor nominating with the, with the, with the city manager selecting for those neighborhood positions.
Okay. George Brown and Mike in the queue. And my only comment on your motion is that in terms of ongoing committees, in general, I might, I would make a recommendation, but it's the council that would generally do the choosing. In this case--
For council committees. Yeah. That advised the council. Correct.
All right. George?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm not going to support this motion because I think that it conflates two different, completely different things. One is the composition of the panel, and the other one is the duties, some of the duties of the panel. And I don't think they should be mixed. So I will vote against this one, and I will actually support the AIS recommendation. And the reason I will support that one, I was, I'm going to, I would support Counselor Clark's, but I think that this one actually goes a step farther. It does the same thing. This is kind of two parts. And the second part, quote, "And the two representatives from the MPT-impacted neighborhood would be selected by the impacted neighborhood association." That's pretty much what Counselor Clark's says. But then the first part says that the neighborhood associations would elect the two members of the review panel, and that goes farther than Counselor Clark's motion number two. So I think this is the superior, Counselor Clark's is fine, there's nothing-- So I think this is the superior, Councilor Clark says, fine, there's nothing wrong with that.
I'd accept that as a friendly.
Pardon me?
I'd accept that as a friendly.
Excuse me, it's, right now, Councilor Zelenka's motion to substitute is on the floor.
Then you have to go back to that.
If it's failed, then get to it.
Exactly.
Get to it.
Right.
Okay.
I just wanted to know that.
All right. I heard you. Okay, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. My piece with that is there are, sometimes, it's odd, and it's not frequent, but there are sometimes controversies when we have projects built in particular areas in town of size, and my intent is to minimize the potential for that. And one of those areas where we might best minimize potential conflict between neighborhood associations and that which gets built is to put them in a closer working relationship. That's one of the issues that I'll speak to later in one of my other motions, but in the case of how I worded this motion, it's designed intentionally so that the people who, whose neighborhood association is most directly affected have the ability to have their voice most directly heard about that specific presented project. So they get to choose the person that they think is best able, in that particular case, to analyze that application and give good feedback to council. Not that this mayor or any other mayor wouldn't do a great job of finding a good person from that neighborhood association, but it takes off the table the potential argument that, well, that's just their handpicked person that was going to say yes anyway. Let's the neighborhood association say, this is our voice to analyze this application.
Aaron, then Chris.
So, I guess the reason I would prefer the framing that Alan has for this is, well, because I think they're both getting at exactly what you were speaking to, that we want folks from the impacted neighborhood to be able to have a voice in whether or not the project happens and how it happens if it does. But I think, as Alan pointed out, we don't have any city committees where a neighborhood association or similar group gets to appoint directly without some check in the process, and so the neighborhood association might have their own conflict about who they want representing them. There might be more, you know, five people want to represent. So this would provide one more step in the process. If the neighborhood, the mayor wouldn't be choosing the person, the neighborhood association would be saying, this is who we want representing us. The mayor would most likely say, great, and provide those names to the city manager. But if we remove that gatekeeping, I think we create a precedent for other future committees we may want to form where that could just create many more problems than we might even anticipate. So, I'm a little hesitant to change our protocol from how we typically appoint committees of this kind and remove that extra step of a formal recommendation from the mayor, in this case, to the city manager for the city manager's committee, and that would apply to both the at-large members, who are always serving on the panel, and the ones who are there for a specific program. So, that's why I would be more in favor of Councilor Zelenka's, and I think there's also, Councilor Zelenka added to his, which could be a separate motion, but these steps of interim review of the projects and reporting out, which I think are also valuable.
Yes.
Thank you. Both of the options are trying to get at the notion of how we can have greater neighborhood engagement in this process, which is a wonderful thing. So we're down to just, how does that neighborhood representation get onto the group? And in weighing the pros and cons, I agree, this would be out of the ordinary. Many of the commissions and boards that we appoint people to, they go through a whole process that allows there to be that in place. But many of the boards and commissions that we appoint to really have a mandate that's citywide. Human rights for the city, police for the city, sustainability for the city. This is a little bit of a different animal in that the MPTs happen and occur in specific areas and impact specific neighborhoods. And for me, that makes it just a little bit different enough of an animal that I wouldn't want to say, we should do it because it's protocol, we should do it because it's going to make sense and restore confidence and trust between the city and the neighborhoods. And when I attended the neighborhood leaders meeting, what struck me very clearly was the degree to which we need to build and enhance that trust and relationship between the city and the neighborhoods. And this is one way we could very effectively do that, without it costing us unreasonably in terms of that. I wouldn't want to do it with every board and commission, I think that's reasonable, but in this particular case, because of the stakeholder impact in a very specific and tight area, I would be supportive of the notion of letting them, in this case, pick their representatives. And hopefully, they will do it in a very responsible and thoughtful way, and I would fully expect that. So, I think in this one case, I will support what Mike's trying to get to, and if he accepts the friendly of AIS number one, I think it will make it even stronger, knowing that, yeah, it's a trade-off. It's a pro and con between the two choices. I could have gone either way, but I think in this case, I really want to build as much trust and confidence and faith with the neighborhoods as I can. I think this will be the way to do it.
Alan?
Yeah, besides the protocol, there is no body that the city, the neighborhood leadership council is not actually a city body, and it's not empowered by the city or anything. So, if we did that, we would need some kind of mechanism for how they would select that person, or, in this case, four people, and maybe something as simple as a majority of the neighborhood associations would pick them, but the, I mean, that's fairly clear in the neighborhood association how they would do that. They would go through their neighborhood association board and select that person and forward that name, but we don't have a body that's officially organized or by the city to look at, so you'd need some kind of rule about how the neighborhood associations would select that person. But I do think that there, we're both trying to get at the same thing, it's the input from the neighborhoods, it's a matter of how it gets done, and I think we have a protocol that's in place for good reason, and I think we should stick to it.
Got the, George Brown, and then George Pauling, and the only thing that I would just pull out of this is, it sounds to me like there's broad, maybe not total, because I still think you don't agree with that, but there is an understanding about the importance of representation from the neighborhood that the MPT is taking place in. The other two are broad for the whole city, wherever the MPTs are, so those, you can think about how, those don't all have to be dealt with in the same way. Just think about that. George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'll be very brief, because Councilor Pryor basically covered my main point, which is, yes, this is different. This is different. It's different from the budget committee, it's different from the police commission. The MPT ordinance that we're trying to revise is a housing ordinance, and housing takes place in neighborhoods, and it has tremendous impacts, for good or bad, on the surrounding neighbors, and we're trying to craft an ordinance that the impacts will be good. And so it's, I think it's imperative that the neighbors choose who they want to be on both the standing panel, and then whenever a project was proposed for any particular neighborhood, two representatives from that neighborhood would also participate on the panel. It's a diff, like I say, it's different. The budget committee, we don't say, okay, there has to be one person from every neighborhood on the budget committee. That doesn't make sense, but since this is concerned so closely with housing, I mean, it's fundamental to the whole thing that we're working on here, I think it's really important to, for the neighbors to participate in this in a very important way. Thank you.
George Pauling?
Yeah, pretty much everything has already been said. I just, I think what's proposed in the AIS is pretty simple, and it gets to the point where we all want, and that's, we want to hear from the impacted neighborhood, and I can only go by what the three neighborhood associations that I represent, but I tell you, I don't think there'd be a difficult time in finding volunteers to take part in something like this, and I'm not too concerned about them not being able to come up with what just, if they come up with three, they're going to have to narrow it down. It's up to them to say, who's going to represent my neighborhood, to talk about what's going to impact my neighborhood. So I think this is, it's clean, it's simple, and it's very workable.
And now we're going to vote on Alan's motion. All those in favor indicate. Two in favor, in opposition, one, two, three, four, five, six, it goes down. Now you're back to the main motion.
Yes, ma'am, which I will allow to have, to be friendly amended, as George indicated.
So that would, in essence, be recommendation one?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Ready to vote?
Excuse me, Mayor, who was the second?
I did, and I agree with that.
All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. Okay. Onto the next thing is AIS recommendation number two. Amend the ordinance to require an independent outside professional review of the project's financial pro forma and annual financial statements. That independent review would be incorporated into individual project application recommendations provided to the council, and also incorporated into the annual report provided to the council. And in this case, I think that some of George's proposals fit into this, and I don't know if anybody else's did, but I got George, and then I've got Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I would suggest that we kind of switch the order around and put this after the vote on my number one, because if my motion number one passes-
Why don't you just put number one out?
Yeah, then I would, then this one won't really be necessary, nor will-
So just put it out.
As a substitute.
There's no motion.
We've not even moved yet.
Okay. That's probably not a bad idea. I will, therefore, I will make a motion. This is my motion number one. I move to amend the ordinance so that the purpose and approved criteria ensures that projects receiving a tax exemption construct at least 50% of the dwelling units as workforce and/or affordable housing that shall be available as such for a minimum of 10 years. Subsection one, to be counted towards the 50% requirement, the cost of a dwelling unit must be no more than 30% of the area median income. Subsection two, in lieu of providing the required number of units that meet the criteria in section one, the owner of an approved MPT project shall make an annual payment to the city, and the amount is calculated as follows. A, the payment is calculated in section two B shall be made for a sufficient number of dwelling units, such that the number of dwelling units that meet the criteria in section one, plus the number of dwelling units for which an in lieu payment is made, is at least 50% of the dwelling units in the development. For each dwelling, B, for each dwelling unit, for which an in lieu payment is made, the in lieu of payment shall equal the difference between the annual rental or ownership cost of the dwelling unit and 30% of the AMI. Number three, subsection, the city shall allocate all funds received from the provision in section two to workforce and affordable programs, affordable housing programs within Eugene.
Second, for the purpose of discussion.
Moved and seconded. City manager?
Just want to make sure we clarified to understand, on subsect, bullet one, where it says to be counted towards a 50% requirement, the cost of the dwelling unit must be no more than 30%. Is that really that the amount that somebody pays for their housing can't be more than 30% of their income?
Right, so the dwelling unit actually doesn't cost no more than 30%?
Well, it's, yes, it's the round.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Okay. George, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, I'd like to. This motion, I think, will go a long ways to gaining broad public support, and because now we're tying the housing, which is a fundamental reason to have a MPT, rather than with some abstract figure of, well, we need to build 1,500 units, and, you know, that's too abstract for people, and that's very, those figures are very debatable. And I feel that if people knew that an important component was providing workforce housing, and, you know, that's really what we need, that's the type of housing that we need. I really don't think personally that we need a lot more super high-end market rate housing. That would go a long way towards gaining public support. If we pass this, I won't need to make motion number two, three, and four, because we won't really need to monitor the developer's returns, the owner's returns. We don't care. The idea is, this provides great flexibility for the owner of the project. He doesn't have to build any workforce units, okay? 100% of the units can be whatever he wants to charge. This would provide that 50%, however, you can go ahead and do that, make as much money as you want to, and we won't get in your business and closely monitor your profits every year during the exemption. However, if you want to do that, that's fine, but for 50% of your units, we're going to calculate the difference between what you're charging and what a workforce unit would be, and you make an in lieu payment to the city every year. It provides lots of flexibility for the developer, and it doesn't pit developers who want to do the 50% workforce and those who don't. It's kind of levels the playing field in that respect. And actually, it removes the 1,500-unit provision that's in the current ordinance. We don't care about number of units. This could go on indefinitely, as long as workforce units are being created, or in lieu payments are being paid to the city. So, I see it as a great benefit. It simplifies a lot of things, as far as our requirements for, you know, financial review every year. It simplifies it, and so I, I'll need another round, probably.
Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. I seconded this, too, because I like the idea of this. I have a couple of questions and a couple of things I want to clarify. However, I like the elegance of this option, because it takes off the table the need for all the after-the-fact stuff that we know because of some of the communications we've had from residents and from people involved in building things, that providing financials after the fact is a deal killer for them with regard to their use of this financial tool. So, this no longer requires the back-end tax returns and financials for analysis by a committee and everybody in their business, it's just a very straightforward, simple thing. What kind of housing do we want to see built in these multi-unit places? And if they're complying with that and doing the thing that we'd like them to do, which is build housing for folks, then they get the MPT, and they don't experience any penalty. For those that want to build higher-end stuff, all of the choices still within the realm and spectrum of the developer of what they decide to build, but if, but like our discussions around having penalties for over profiteering, or, you know, back-end payments based on other complex calculations, this is very simple. If you want to build very high-end places, that's fine, that's great. We hope you do it well. And here is the in lieu of payment that we're going to ask from you to go towards the goals that we've set with regard to affordable housing. So the more high-end housing we build, the more amount of money we have for building affordable housing in the right way. We don't have all the back-end paperwork and problems. It's very predictable for those who are building things, and so it seems like, as long as the definitions around workforce housing are clear, and that's the part where I want to make sure that there are two things. One, we have clear administrative rule around what are the definitions of workforce housing, and what are our calculations for percentages? And number two, that it exists for the length of the MPT period and for no longer. And in those two pieces, I, if they come in reasonably well-done, I think this is a much more elegant solution than many of the amendments we have on the table for this.
Greg?
Just one question for Councilor Brown. How did you arrive at the 50% piece on this?
Well, I've been living with MPT for four or five years, and it's a result of talking to people in the development community, talking to neighbors, and my own research. That's all.
So, one other question, George. So, do you think this is something that, from your conversations, and maybe some of what Mike's conversations have been, and a few of my own, is something that the developers can really kind of get behind because of the simplicity of this, or what's your-
I believe that they would. Yes.
Good.
Okay, I've got Chris, and then Alan.
The mechanism does look very elegant. I mean, it is, it's easy to understand, somebody would definitely see this, they have- I mean, it is, it's easy to understand, somebody would definitely see this, they have an option of either building the units or paying for units if they don't want to build them. The only concern I have is that the 50% requirement may turn this into an unusable tool. I don't, I'm not a developer, I don't claim to be an expert in development, but I think if somebody knew that the only way they could qualify for a MPT was to make half of the units they were building be, fall into a certain category, I don't know if that would or would not pencil out.
You guys.
Yeah, I'll first refer back to the work that the Technical Resource Group did, TRG, and keep in mind that really this program is focused on redevelopment, not greenfield development, which is different. And we're only focused on downtown at this point, so you're talking about buying property at $30 to $35 a square foot, not $3 a square foot. And then dealing with infrastructure, you know, removal of structures, you're dealing with parking, all of those things make this downtown urban development experience much more expensive. On top of that, we have energy efficiency goals, we have density goals, we have other things that also may add some project costs. So the question really, I think Counselor Pryor's question is a good one, does the problem, does the program actually work at that time, at that point, given the financial limitations of the reduced rents for 10 years? We support the ideas of workforce housing, it's a very important unmet need in the community. I think it would really require digging into these numbers a lot more deeply to figure out, does this work? Would anyone actually build anything downtown, for example?
So, well, the notion behind the motion, I think, is elegant, it's creative. I just worry that 50% is going to create a tool that no one will be able to use or will want to use, and we'll basically render it moot. Doesn't matter whether we pass it or not, because no one will ever use it. So perhaps we could have some consideration about a percentage other than 50. We've been talking about 10% as a contribution to an affordable housing fund, so somewhere between 10% and 50% is a huge, is a huge gap. So I like the idea of this mechanism, I'm just really worried that if we say half the units have to be low-income, particularly with some of the constraints we're talking about in downtown, it may make this into a tool that no one ever uses.
City manager, do you have something you want to say?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so I have Alan, and then Mike, and then Greg.
Yes, I have a couple of questions about how this gets implemented, I guess I share some of Counselor Pryor's concerns. Originally, the intent was to either have 10% of your tax credit go to affordable housing fund, buy permanent affordable housing, this is not permanent, this is only 10 years, it might revert at 10 years, we can't tell, that's one of the issues. The other one is, the original intent was you could either pay into the affordable housing fund, or you could build affordable housing, it kind of was a trade-off, and it brings up the question of where does the 50% come from and whether or not that's even doable? And if, and if 50% of the units must be no more than 30% of the area median income, meaning the rent, I don't know what that, do we know what that number is and how different it is from the market rate for downtown, for instance, where this is going to be initially, except probably for years? What's the difference between that rate, that rent and the market rents that are here? And whether or not they could do that with the cost of land and other downtown costs? And then, does this have any, getting this credit, does it impact other tax credits that would be necessary to be able to get in order to do affordable housing? Because almost, I think all of our affordable housing get other types of tax credits, and I'm not sure how that interplay works. And then, third, I guess I need an explanation, George, about how option two works, the in lieu of payment? I don't quite understand it, that, like, for instance, the, for each dwelling unit, the in lieu of payment is made and shall equal the difference between the annual rent, ownership, cost of the dwelling unit and the 30% AMI. I don't understand how that actually works.
You're asking me directly right now?
Yeah.
Okay, well, which one was your first question? I mean, you've got the examples that I sent out when I first sent the motion. First of all, I think maybe I need to say that workforce housing, pretty commonly across the United States, 30%, if you're paying 30% or more of your income...
Can you hold for just a minute? I want to, I'm just going to give, this is George's turn, so he can, he can take, answer the question, and he can take his, the whole three minutes.
Well, no, yeah, I'm responding to Counselor...
I understand, but you can do that within your three minutes.
Well, that's not what I wanted to use my three minutes for. I mean, in this case, it seems like he's asking me, but he could be asking a staff person something, and it's not cutting in. You see what I'm saying? I mean...
So Alan, maybe you want to ask staff those questions?
Okay, so maybe Denny can explain how that calculation works.
Typically, what we would look at is rents affordable to individuals or families at, say, 60% median income, that's how we defined affordability. I think how I would interpret this would be, this is affordable to someone who's at 100% of median income, which means they're not spending more than 30% of their income on rent. I think that's what Counselor Brown might be trying to achieve, but it's a little bit inverse, so it's hard to track. But I think really what we're talking about generally is affordable to someone at 100% median income. Is that close?
Well, I'm using, the Eugene's AMI is $41,000. 30% of AMI is $12,300. So that works out to be, you know, a little over $1,000 a month in rent, that's workforce.
Counselor Deling, have you got any other questions of staff?
So how does, I still don't get how two B works, how does that calculation work?
Two B, hmm.
Difference between the annual rental or ownership cost of the dwelling unit and 30% AMI, so if...
Do you have the examples I provided in front of you? They kind of show how it works.
So if it, if the...
So what I'm going to do here is Counselor Brown knows your questions, maybe I'll give him some time to work on them, and I'm going to go on to, I've got Mike and Greg in a queue.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's really important to separate out the terms of this discussion. This isn't low-income or affordable housing he's talking about. We're not talking about building 50% of the project as low-income or affordable housing. We're talking about workforce housing, in other words, places that aren't high-end student apartments, that only, you know, international students can afford to live in and folks who work for a living can't afford. This is the kind of housing that we want, especially on travel corridors of people that work for a living, and we're saying, half, half of those units are going to be within the realm of something that someone who makes an average wage can easily afford. And if that's the case, you don't face any kind of penalty. If you're building multifamily units and you still want to build high-line stuff that charges a lot of money for people, we know what those rents are, we know what they're charged, there's an easy mechanism to figure that out, and that is very transparent and measurable every year. And so that difference between what the median income is and how you'd calculate what a percentage of affordability for a median income, between that and what you're, you know, maybe the high dollar rate you're charging for that rent, is where you assess the fee. On that, if you want to make a bunch of money selling, you know, renting out high-line stuff, well, there'll be a little fee in there, and that money will be used for affordable housing. And that makes sense, that's fair. It's rather like, you know, a progressive income tax, the more that it's above and beyond that kind of level of income, the higher that fee. It's actually going to end up that the developer, I think, with this particular approach, will pay less money on average for someone who's building stuff towards affordable and low-income housing, but you'll get more of it from those higher-line projects. You'll still get the same amount of money for affordable housing at the end of the day, but what we'll end up with as a city is more workforce housing, the kind of place that folks who work for a living can afford to live in, and I think it makes sense. I do, however, want to make sure that with my last few seconds here, we talk about what the definitions are around that, that anything that is built in administrative rule about what defines workforce housing comes back to council for approval, because that part's going to be important, how we make the definitions of that and what the percentages are, that's going to be important for us all to agree on. But what we get at the end of the day with something like this, I think, is the kind of housing we actually want to see built, stuff that people can afford to live in and stuff that's well-built, and we don't end up with the kind of projects we don't want.
I've got Greg, George, Betty, and Claire.
So, thank you, Mayor. I'm intrigued, one of the, one of the things that, well, three things here, one of the things that Counselor Pryor brings up is the issue of, you know, this 50% mark being a disincentive to development and really kind of, you know, constraining the tools so much that it becomes unusable or unworkable. I would like some more analysis, if we can get some analysis from staff and/or from Counselor Brown about what the, is 50% the tipping point? Could it be 40%, 30%? The other thing, too, is I'll take a 30,000-foot look at this, and that is part of the reason in my, you know, view of this kind of convoluted situation that we're in, is that the creation, the MPT is being used to create more density on travel corridors, give us more housing units to meet the demand that we're going to have in the future, but also creates an environment where existing housing, in some contexts, will be moving out of higher-end categories and becoming more affordable. So because we're adding more housing stock by virtue of MPT, we're creating a wider platform, and that some of the existing housing that we have, which is good housing stock, becomes more affordable by virtue of the fact that we have more housing stock. And that you have other higher-end, you know, housing that creates a situation where we ultimately start getting more affordable housing, which we haven't been able to build because we don't have the federal mechanisms and other things anymore that we used to have to create the kind of affordable housing that we're looking for. So it gives us this, you know, yin and yang, if you will, to be able to create that. So I would like to see, you know, I'm not trying to dismiss the analysis that George is providing, but I would like to see how we arrive at the analysis and, you know, is 50% a fig, the figure, or is there another figure in there that would give us, or give, you know, developers the kind of incentive that does not, you know, kill the purpose of the tool to begin with? I don't know if that makes sense or not, but maybe, maybe Denny can help.
Yeah, I could just comment on the analysis. I mentioned the TRG, but I didn't elaborate. They spent countless hours doing this analysis of our land supply and what's the need for multifamily housing, particularly around redevelopment. And their conclusion was generally that redevelopment was not going to occur on its own. In fact, if you did a 10- or 20-year look back, there's virtually been no redevelopment. There's been greenfield development, there's been MPT-supported redevelopment, there's been student housing redevelopment, but just general market redevelopment hasn't occurred. And their conclusion really was that you probably need more than just MPT to see that redevelopment occur. So, you know, as you restrain some of the incentive here, I think you have a bigger challenge, and if our goal's workforce housing, I really think we would really need to dive into that and say, if that's our goal, what kind of tools do we need to make that happen? I would be concerned, at least through the TRG's work, that this isn't going to be enough of incentive to see workforce housing built, because I think they've done a lot of that analysis already.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, there has been redevelopment without MPT the last few years, the first year I got on council. I watched two apartment houses go up on South Willamette. To build them, they had to tear down existing structures. There have been several all around town, there was one out on Coburg Road. There, I mean, you know, to keep repeating that statement that there hasn't been any redevelopment other than student housing is simply, it's really not true, there's, it has happened. I dispute that statement pretty strongly. Let's go back to, let's look at case A. We're talking about a theoretical 100-unit structure. 50% of those units, 50 units, would have to meet the workforce housing requirement or make an in lieu payment. Case A, project provides 50 dwelling units with rents, and by the way, that monthly rent figure is $1,025. You arrive at that by taking the Eugene area median income of $41,000, and you times that by 30%, which is the Urban Institutes threshold for being rent burden. And that comes out to $12,300 a year, divide by 12, looks out to be about $1,025 a month, rent. All right, let's say, case A, there's 100 units. The project provides 50 dwelling units with rents that are $1,025. Required annual in lieu payments? None, nothing. The developer gets the whole development. He can charge other things, you know, a higher structure on the other 50 units, and it is not uncommon for a development of 100 units or more, even smaller, to have a pretty wide separation in rent structures. And I'll give you, I'll just quote you an example here. This is from a project that will be, I think, fully leased by next fall. Here's the difference in their bed prices in a four-bedroom unit, range from, at the low end, $714 a month to $934 a month. That's a bed in a four-bedroom unit. But there's different amenities in each unit, therefore, they have that price separation, they charge more money for the units that have the amenities. Same thing, five-bedroom unit type, the range is $689 at the low to $949 at the high.
Thank you.
I need another round.
Okay, Betty?
Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to Mike for pointing out the difference between affordable and subsidized housing. I think people are confusing the two, and what George is suggesting, in my opinion, is not subsidized housing. I think we misuse that term affordable frequently, and affordable is what we need for working people. As for, I would prefer that it be 100% affordable if we're giving a subsidy. If people don't want the subsidy, if they want to build housing and charge whatever they can get, we don't have to give them a tax exemption. I object to the tax exemption unless there's some benefit. It should be affordable for working people and in a place where it's needed, if we're giving any kind of incentive, not just anywhere. And I'm glad that George pointed out that there are ways that you can have, and this goes back to inclusionary zoning, which is really important, I think that the amenities can be different within the same housing development. And within, and if it's separate houses, they could be different, too. I know in Ashland, until, in the past at least, anyone who built houses had to build some of them for a lower price and with different amenities. They could, it could be carpeting, garages, dishwashers, all sorts of things, that can be different. But I think that's all I want to say, thank you.
Claire?
Thanks. So, you know, this seems to me like, the way Counselor Clark was referring to it, you were thinking that Counselor Brown was offering this as an alternative to the kind of typical MPT program that we've been talking about, but the way I read the motion, this would completely replace all the current MPT criteria. completely replace all the current MPT criteria. Am I interpreting that correct, George? That there would, this would be, this would be the only...
Well, yeah, this is, this is...
You'd have to create a program, a project that had 50% of the units available. So, in my mind, that, I mean, that's a huge change. Or the in-lu payment. So, and this is a big, dramatic change from how we've been viewing this program. So I'm a little uncomfortable at the 11th hour dumping out all the work that's been done and creating what would essentially be a program to create affordable housing. Now, I support the idea of creating affordable housing, for sure, and I absolutely agree we need more of it. Do we currently have programs that would support development of affordable housing?
Yes, we actually have the LERTD, which is a low-income rental housing property tax exemption, which is a 20-year exemption. Projects like Baskin Village and others have received the...
So those are, and those are actually technically low-income housing that have some subsidy involved, is that correct?
Yes.
And criteria in terms of income?
That's correct. So they usually have home funds and tax credits and so forth.
Yeah, so we need to use that program more, for sure, but I think there's this middle place that I think Mike and George and even Betty are talking about, which is, we're using the term workforce housing, so medium-income, $35,000 to $40,000 a year folks. And we don't necessarily have a program for them, but I think this MPT program is designed as an economic incentive to put housing on places in our community that it's not going to be built without it. I think that is the purpose. And I think when we start mixing too much else into the program, I think what we're trying to get at with all the other amendments we have will create a lot of, a much better program than we've had. But I think this takes it way to another place. And I would agree with Chris that I think it would end up having a program that's not being used, which might be the intent of the motion, is to make the MPT program irrelevant. Sorry, George, if that irritates you. But I, you know, I also think neighborhoods would be more likely to embrace the idea of affordable housing coming in rather than high-end units. So I think there is some appeal to it. But at this time, I'm not ready to totally change the program up. One suggestion would be that we could pass MPTs with both criteria, two separate criteria, and we could see who applies under which program and what gets built.
I've got George, Mike, and Chris. George?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, yeah, first of all, I need to respond to your suggestion that I'm trying to kill the MPT program. I've been doing everything in my power to make it relevant for most of the people that live here, because I believe what's in front of us currently is not, is not relevant. If we, if we go ahead with that and the path that we're headed, only high-end stuff will be created, only in high-value areas. Because after downtown, it'll be Midtown and South, you know, South Willamette. I will predict that no projects will be built in Bethel, Highway 99, or Transom. It will just be in high-value areas. And I just really feel that, you know, most of the people that live in town are not going to go for a program like that. I think that the people that are angry now about it will become more angry and will tip a lot of other people against, against the whole program. And I just like to go back one more time to the fact that, you know, when I got on council six years ago, the percentage of people that were rent burdened was 40%. Well, it's 60% now, six years later. Okay, that's over half the people that live in Eugene are rent burdened. This is from the city's own website. I'm not making that figure up. So, yes, it's true, we have LERTD, we have all these other things, HACSA and the other providers of, you know, affordable housing, low-end housing are, are doing a fantastic job, but we're still falling behind. In spite of all the efforts we're making now, we're still falling behind. And MPT has not helped. It hasn't helped this, this particular situation, this provided housing, but it hasn't done anything for people that are rent burdened. So I guess my question is, without some, I would say fairly major changes in the path that we're headed down now with the existing model of the ordinance, is, you know, my, my question is, why would 60% of the people that live in town be excited for us to enable the building of more high-end stuff that they will never be able to afford to live in? I don't understand, you know, it's, someone explain that to me, how, why they would get excited about a place they'll never be able to afford to live in. They won't be. So, no, I'm actually trying to make this a program that is focused more on the type of housing that we need, rather than more abstract things, like, oh, we need more housing downtown. Do people that live in Bethel and Transom really care about more housing downtown that they won't be able to afford to live in? I don't think that they do. I think we need to focus on the type of housing that we really need. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate my friend Claire's concerns. I want to say, though, that all of the issues around the changes that we have proposed and we've discussed, and we've had other people work on around MPT, are about enhancing the public benefit of a public subsidy. That's the, that's the bottom-line reason for the entire discussion. And if making more high-quality, affordable housing that working people can afford to live in, that comply with all our planning about living more densely and on travel corridors, isn't a high public benefit, then I'm not sure what's the highest public benefit we could assign to this program. I think that's the very highest kind of public benefit that we can have out of this and get the largest amount of potential public support for doing it. Now, I would also say, I think there's a happy medium here. I think there's a, there's a nice middle ground that we can get to here. There are a number of other proposals that have been made along the way that can still fit in this. The issues around green building, issues around LEED certification, issues of, some of the pieces that Allen's proposed. I think there are other things that make this, and public participation in the process, that I think make a lot of sense and aren't, aren't extricated by just this particular way of looking at the financing part. This part, at least from my perspective, deals with just how we analyze the financial tools we've been talking about, and how we analyze the, the financial pieces and the, and the tracking and the transparency, so that people have a really clear way to analyze, what'd you build? Is it in the public interest? You know, if you're building stuff that's not, you know, that's a lot higher-end, then are you contributing to affordable housing? It's an elegant way to answer the questions and the, and the things we've all been trying to get to as goals. And I, that's why I like it. But again, there's, you know, there's a, there's a couple of pieces around definitions and percentages that need to be, need to be fine-tuned. I know, it seems to me as though, for example, that the 50% number is abstract. And I don't know, George, because we hadn't had a chance to talk about it, whether or not that's an abstract number choice. But I would want to make sure that that didn't have any, any negative effects. But I could be in a position to say, yeah, I can vote in favor of this tonight, learn more because we're going to talk more tomorrow, and say, oh, maybe we learned something after the fact that those numbers need some tweaking and for a particular reason, to make them more workable and more real on the ground. And I'd be willing to hear that and do that. But I'd be willing to vote in favor of it tonight, knowing that there's more, you know, more discussion to be had about the specifics of those numbers.
Chris?
Well, I appreciate hearing that. I think that's, that's, that's great to hear. And I also appreciate the clarification on workforce versus low-income. I think that was a very helpful thing for me. I looked up the area median income, and your numbers are pretty right on. And actually, the, the overall rents, just in September of last year, was $971, so it's, it's in that area. For me, what this boils down to is, yeah, I think, as I said, I think this is elegant, but like others, is 50% the right number? It is sudden, it's come up very quickly, and as you're saying, maybe it's 50, maybe it's not. Rather than pass it now and then hope to change it later, maybe a better solution would be to hold on to this and say, this has a lot of merit. There's some really good ideas here. And if we could have either the TRG or the Development Committee, or even the staff, say, let's take a look at this 50% and see if it pencils out. Would it be a number that would generally be accepted as, as a wise number? Maybe it's 40, maybe it's 45, I don't know. I just want to make sure that if we're going to pass something that is disinclusive and this broad, and then maybe even smart, we do it in a way that has a number that is the most effective for what we're really trying to accomplish. Because I agree that we do want to enhance the housing in this area. We want to do it in a way that's smart. And I don't know if 50% is the right number. But I'm willing to take the time, if we can do it as quickly as possible, to find out what that, what that number could be. This formula, this mechanism, could be a very good one if we have a number that also enhances the use of this number. And so I'd be willing to wait and say, is 50% the right number, or would it be some other number? And then we could go ahead and proceed on it. So I'm reluctant to pass something tonight in the hope that we might change it later.
So I've got Greg and Mike and George in a queue on this, and we've got, we're going to try to wrap up in the next 10 minutes for tonight. So one option for you guys is to take this concept and table it till tomorrow, so there's more time to digest it. And, and then the other is that notion of, is there something? This is such an important issue for the community and something that you worked on so hard. It would seem sad to me that it ended up being a tie vote where you never felt like you had a solid majority around this table that wanted to go in a particular direction. So I'm just suggesting that thinking about what everybody has said and thinking about the need for, for workforce housing, thinking about wanting to keep a lot of those things that are already on the table going, how do, how can we put something together that could probably get more, more support? So that's just my, my thinking, and I appreciate others. Breathing time's important when you're dealing with something of this magnitude, that we obviously have strongly, strong different opinions about. Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. Denny, what's our current vacancy rate? So I heard recently offhand, totally, that it was something around 2% right now.
I don't know if it's that low, but it's generally fairly low if you look at communities across the state and so forth. We've generally had a very low vacancy rate for a long time. You know, that's ranged from 3% to 4%, just depending. We don't really get good data anymore. No one does a comprehensive analysis. There used to be publications and so forth, but that's a harder number to come by. But it's generally low. And I don't know if that means 2% or 3%, but it's low.
So I'm going to go back to, you know, some of the work of the TRG group, but I want to just underscore this for, for everybody here and then out in the community. I have seldom met a developer who did not want to make money. Nobody's in the business of building housing or most anything else that they're not in there to make some kind of profit on. And for us to be able to get to our goals as a community, we, as a public entity, have limited tools to be able to do that. And for us to not, you know, if we constrain this tool so much that it becomes unusable and unworkable, then we're shooting ourselves in the foot. You know, I'm not trying to dismiss what the work that George has done out of hand. I think that it is, it has a lot of merit and that we can possibly get somewhere with this as a starting point. But I think that we need to have a little more analysis and a deeper look to be able to not, you know, as Claire said, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater and create a situation where we have a tool that, you know, we have a hammer without a head, a stick. And, you know, that's not going to work to drive the nail. So I, I think that, I'm with Mike and Chris on this. I think that we need to have a little more in-depth analysis and work through the numbers to get us to a point where we can, you know, make sure that we have a tool that is workable, accessible, and that does not discourage the kind of development that we want and the kind of development that we need. Because we are, we, more than we have in the housing stock, the more eventually that we are going to create affordable housing by the shift in that stock.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Initially, when I raised my hand, I was going to suggest we move on to one of the other couple opportunities to talk before we got to the end here on this and to take your advice to table. But with four minutes left, I guess I'll just move to table this until tomorrow's discussion at our work session at noon.
Second.
Moved and seconded, there is no debate.
No debate on that.
All in favor? Please indicate. One, two, three, four? In opposition? One, two, three, four? Okay, so I'm, I brought up the idea I'm going to support waiting until tomorrow, so I'll vote with a table. Okay, that's it for this particular session.